22nd, 2023. It is -- somebody made me put my phone away. So it's 6:16. We are in the Nashua North Boardroom. Ms. Regan? Ms. Regan? Ms. Lampier? Can you do roll call, please?
Sure.
Ms. Darling?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Oden?
Here.
I am here. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
And Ms. Gilio?
Here.
And we have Dr. Andre, Dr. Sarfati, Mr. Poska, Mr. Donovan, and our high school board members. Warren?
Here.
And Dante?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Once you're done with the prayer, Ms. Brown, you want to lead us in the pledge? You made eye contact first, so you win.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. We're going to jump right into our presentation, so I will... Did we start the recording? Okay. Oh, we're going to try to knock me out? What, you don't like my puns? But I will hand the floor over to Dr. Andre now.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. At this time, I'd like to bring up Mr. Preston Smith, who's the principal owner of the Business Information Services. We've been working with Preston for the last almost six months now. They're in our redistricting project. So I'm going to hand the floor over to Mr. Smith, and he'll walk through the summary of his findings to date. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, thank you very much. It's good to be back here again, so we appreciate the chance. I'll go through the slides as quickly as we can, and then have plenty of time for questions. Okay, next slide. All right, I'd like to reiterate credentials that my firm brings to this project. We have completed more than 200 projects in 15 states since 2024. Since 2004, I have a graduate degree in public administration with a specialization in statistics. And our projections, they vary by an average of only 3/10% per year. We have the highest degree of accuracy of any demographic firm in the country. I've worked on redistricting projects as large as the state of West Virginia, and we've also done projects with more than 40,000 students. Our analysis for this district shows that for the next three models that we project out, there will be a decrease over the next 10 years of as much as 19%, and on the very positive, optimistic range, only 11% decline. So that's the three models, and I'll explain in my presentation tonight of why we believe that's going to happen. Next slide. Okay, next. We break this down by grades, 10 years out. The decreases are going to range from about 3.4% decrease for the third grade up to a 38% decrease for the 12th grade, and that's why it's going to decrease per grade. Kindergarten, about 15% drop. It has a spot there where it's not going to go down quite as much, and then when you get to the high school years, it gets double digits. Okay, next. We do not see the likelihood for enrollment growth because there are too many factors that can inhibit kind of enrollment growth you would expect. In fact, of all projects we've worked on, this district was what we call a perfect storm. You've got all the elements that come together, and they are all bad for you. Number one is you've got a large and growing private school enrollment. You've got a weak birth rate. You've got weak demographic trends for the school age populations. You have incredibly, very unaffordable housing for families. So much unaffordable, we've not seen this anywhere else in the country. And there's a very weak relationship between new jobs and new enrollment. I'll cover a few other points, too. Okay, next slide. In 2011 to '12, the district had 1,582 private school students within the district's borders, according to the state of New Hampshire. And in 2023, the district had 1,051. That's an increase of 23%. At the same time, during these last 10 years, your public school enrollment doesn't nothing but go down. Statewide, the growth in private school enrollment is 15%, so yours is a good, large percentage higher than what you even see statewide. Next. The best data vendor from data that we can buy shows that your projection market share is around 70% right now. And that's pretty low. I don't know. That's just an estimate. But based on the census data, you look like you're in the mid-80s to just below 90% for the three different senses from 1990 to 2020. To have a drop like that, that's pretty significant. We estimate there are more than 5,300 private school students within 15 miles at 38 different private schools. Again, this is a large private school population, and it's not unusual at all for people to drive 15 or 20 miles to take their child to a private school. We've seen instances where it's 40 or 50 miles. So again, your private school competition may even be greater than 5,000 students. Okay, next. Okay, next slide. Look at the census data. It shows that 38% of all the households in your school district are non-family households. This is a percentage about twice as high as we've seen in any other district in the country we've worked in. Incredibly high, to have that many that are considered non-family households. Okay, next slide. And we just take... Okay, next slide. If we take only 62% of the households that are considered with families, only 41% of those have any children at all, fewer than half. And that's why I've highlighted in the gray here. You've got the female householder makes up about 10%, male householder, head of household with children, 3%, and a married couple is only 28%. Again, these are incredibly low numbers. Okay, next. Let's look at the birth rate, and this comes from your state Department of Health. In 1995, there were 25, 50 births in the district. That was your high point. Today, it's 16, 26, a decrease of 36%. And I'll reiterate, this is the largest decline of any school district that we've seen anywhere in the country for 20 years. We've never seen a district that had this much of a drop in their birth rate. Next. Okay, the number of children under five years old, this is from our vendor data that we purchased, it's expected to increase by 4.6%. And you might think that's not so bad, but the truth is, if they're going to private school or homeschool, you're not getting that large percentage. So it's still projected across district-wide as a decrease. Okay, next. Look at school age population. It's expected to have a 4.8% decrease. Again, district-wide, that doesn't seem too bad. But again, you've got the competition of the private school that's going to chew into that. Next. One demographic that is growing, you've got an increase of over 5,000 persons older than 60 years old during the next decade. That's an increase of 21%. And look at this graph, from 1990 to 2032. That's almost tripled. Huge. Again, we've not seen this in other states. Not seen in other districts we've worked in. Next. When districts want to search for a school, a district to attend, whether they're moving out here, moving to New Hampshire, Massachusetts, they're looking for a place to buy a house, to enroll, this is what they see online at the NISH.com and the SCHOOLDIGGER.com. SCHOOLDIGGER actually has... Your school district ranked 120th in the state, and this one has a 23th, which, again, people make choices. They choose other places to live. If the job will permit them to do that, then perhaps they'll make other choices. Perception can often be reality. Okay, next. All right. Based on the census from 2000 to 2010, your district's population grew by only 111 persons then, but during that same time, you had enrollment fell by 1,300 students. Again, when you've got a population growing, you expect enrollment to grow. Doesn't happen. So for every one person who moved to the district, there were almost 12 fewer students. Again, it's because you're getting so many older people who come here, or people come without families. That's what's happening. We don't have the official numbers yet from the 2020 census. That's why I didn't include it. But I suspect it's probably even more accelerated than what we saw in 2000 to 2010. The time from 2010 to 2020, I think it's probably going to see even a larger number than that. Next. Typically, when you have new jobs coming to a school district, you usually have an increase in enrollment. That does not happen here. The red bars is the increase in Manchester metro. Enrollment's clear trend up, but here's your enrollment. Is the dark blue line. It's slid. So even though you have more jobs coming to the area by a significant number right here in 2016, 2018, a lot more jobs, just not the case. Your enrollment didn't increase. So even though people that moved out here for jobs, they didn't either have children who would enroll in the district or they didn't let them enroll in the district. One of the two. Again, this is not what you would normally expect. Out of over 200 instances of research projects that we've worked on, I would say this probably happens maybe fewer than a half dozen times. It happens here. Okay, next slide. Again, let's look at new construction. Some people believe that when you see new houses go up, you expect new enrollment. And in a lot of school districts, that's what happens, but not here. In 2010, you've had an average of 50 residential units built in the district per year. This is data that comes from your assessor's office, directly from the county. All we did was break it down by year. But every time... Here, you had 50 new units per year built. You had an average decrease since 2010 of 76 students. So the more units who were built, your enrollment continued to go down. So there is zero statistical relationship between new construction and new enrollment. Next. Look at the affordability of housing. As the affordability goes down, it's less likely that people are going to afford houses. And look what's happened since 2013. And look at the value of the homes. The single-family house has gone from about $200,000 to over $400,000. It's doubled in the last 10 years. Not many places in the country have done that either. Okay, next. This is based on census data. The district, they have a very high rental rate. Typical, we see 20% or 25% at the very top end. Districts that have growing enrollments, we usually say less than 20% rental rate. You've got nationwide, it's 36%, but you're at 39%. And I think actually, when we match the students to the parcels, there are actually more renters than that by a fair large number. Next. We actually did match students to the parcels, their addresses, based on the assessor's data. And what we found is that only 2.3% of the students live in houses in the last 10 years, built within the last 10 years. Only about 11% of the students live in houses valued at more than $350,000. Those you see down here, the over $500,000, those are all apartments, apartment complexes. So what you've got, again, you've got the new house constructions, zero relationship. You've got very few students can live in houses that are more than $350,000, and those houses, house prices are just not here to be found. That's why you can't get more families to live here, basically. Next. So I want to spend a few moments on this. There is plenty of space for students in your district in your capacity. We base these capacity numbers from the state of New Hampshire Education Department from June 2020. So it's only about three years old. They allocate 120 square feet per student for elementary, 140 for middle school, 160 for high school. We estimate, based on those numbers, the district can hold almost 15,000 students, and your current enrollment's 9,800. Your utilization rate, 66%. According to the standard of every state that I've worked in and also in New Hampshire, the cutoff is usually about 85% utilization. It's when you realize that if you're below 85%, that's when you're not using your facilities correctly. And that's the standard here in New Hampshire, too. So that's the way it is, by building, based on gross square footage of every square inch under the building. Okay, next. And you see that slide just a little bit better. Here's the current enrollment. Here's the utilization, and here's the column that says, here's the estimated capacity based on gross square footage. So a lot of people will say, how in the world could you get 543 students in main Dunstable? How could you get that many students possibly in there? Well, next slide, I'll show you. The red bars are the estimated capacity that we had, and the blue bars are what actually held in the buildings in 1999 and 2000, 20 years ago. These are your actual enrollments compared to the estimated capacities right now. They're very close. I realize that 20 years ago, you did have some temp classrooms, but I also realize that probably in the last 20 years, you probably have increased some capacity in those buildings. We didn't account for that because those capacity numbers are somewhat dated. They're probably 10 or 15 years old. So it was from a study that was done, an analysis where we pulled those capacity numbers. So gross square footage in, obviously, we didn't think that it would go down in the buildings, and I don't think it probably has. And we don't count temporary classroom space. So look at how close the estimated enrollment, the actual enrollments were to our estimated capacity, and they're very close. Okay, next. But we didn't stop there because some people say, gee, when you count gross square footage under the roof, you're counting the hall space, you're counting the entranceway space, you're counting bathrooms, you're counting cafeterias, you're counting the gym. Yes, that's correct. We count all the gross square footage under the roof, and in our experience of looking at more than 1,000 buildings of which we've worked in, that is the most accurate way. But we went the extra step. We looked at how many classrooms were actually being utilized. We looked at also number of students per classroom. We had actual classroom counts for the elementary grades, and we put 24 students per classroom based on your union contract. We also looked at a weighting factor, and this is a factor that, a way of calculating space based on classroom square footage. So it takes away the gross square footage. It's only classroom square footage. And then we did an average of all four methods to get an overall capacity number. Again, the calculations were consistent. Again, your utilization rate is very, very low. Next. So my final point that I'll make is that not only could you close one school, but we could say, we also calculated that you could actually close six. You could have a district-wide capacity after closing six schools, you still have space for 700 more students. And I go through here, and I didn't at random choose these because I went through, and I'll show you a map where we actually closed these elementary schools, and it'll still fit within your district, and it'll make sense for your bus routes. I'll show the last slide. Here's what a district would look like with the four elementary schools closed. And let me tell you a key point of every district I've worked in where we have closed schools. The key point is, is that when the weaker schools are closed, those that aren't effectively being utilized, it made the other remaining schools stronger because you didn't have those resources being used in the older school or the smaller school that you're closing. You had more resources available for the other buildings. Now, for me, I don't have a dog in this fight. I'm telling you this simply because this is how, as an auditor or as an independent consultant to review your enrollment, I'm telling you they've got some inefficiencies here. If you close a school, you one, two, three, or six, or seven, I don't care, because I'm telling you that that's what an efficient school district would do. It's a tough choice. There's nothing easy about this. But by doing this, you make the remaining schools stronger because the resources are going to be available there to make those buildings more efficient, to make the resources there and the curriculums and the staff that you can move into the buildings that are open, where they actually serve the school district better. So I'll make that. That's my closing point. I'll take any questions you've got.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I appreciate your presentation. That was a lot of information, and I know we've seen some of these numbers before, but it obviously feels a little different when you see them all at once. But I appreciate your time, and I know you spent a lot of extra time to get extra numbers for us that we were asking for.
Yes, we have. We worked through the district probably twice as hard and twice as much time as what we planned. So we have gone the extra mile for you.
Okay. Questions, comments from board members? Do we want to take a minute and absorb what we just? Ms. Oden and Ms. Raymond?
Yes. I was wondering, when you look at birth rates, we have a high ELL population. Most of those students weren't born in this country. How do you account for those students?
The birth rates are actually counted by the physical location of the mother's address is. Otherwise, it doesn't count as a birth within your district. If you've got someone that has a birth, say, in Massachusetts, Rhode Island, and they move here, that would not be reflected in those birth rates. The birth rates count based on the mother's address at that time of the birth, and you extrapolate that data out five years to get the kindergarten enrollment.
Well, if the mother didn't live in this country, was living Puerto Rico or wherever, Mexico, those students aren't counted in the birth rate then, is what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that they would not be counted. We couldn't reflect that. We wouldn't know. Well, simply, we can't track, put a GPS on each family that moves in here. We wouldn't know. We only know according to what births are in those hospitals and the home's address for the mother. And that's the way it's done in any school district in the United States.
No, and I understand that. That's why I was asking about it. So I guess as a follow-up, I would ask, how many ELL students in our district?
Correct me if I'm wrong. I think we're at 27, 28%?
No, it's... I think there's... My memory of the budget was about 1,800 students.
About 1,800?
Yes.
I mean, if your question's implying that because they're ELL, they have a higher birth rate than the non-ELL?
No. If they haven't been in the birth rate numbers, they're not included in some of these numbers. That's what I'm saying.
They may not be, but your enrollment's still going down for 20 years, and they're counted in the overall aggregate number of your enrollment.
Okay. And I think I asked you a question the last time you were here, when you were speaking to the board. You had a number that Amherst Street could take around 600 students.
Yes, I think it'd be about right.
And I spoke up. As somebody who worked in Amherst Street for 15 years, there's no way the cafeteria could feed 600 kids at school. And you said that the cafeteria was the number-one thing that might limit the size of a school.
There's a limiting factor, and I think we go back to even in the year 2000. I think the enrollment was over 500 then.
I think 400 was the highest. In '99, I think around 400 students were at Amherst Street according to these numbers that I've looked at.
Okay.
So I guess I'm saying, well, I'd like to know, what is the second, third, and fourth things that would affect the size of a school? The cafeteria's number one. What would be number two, three, and four?
Location would probably be number two because some of your schools are incredibly close together, and you've got others that would serve a larger area. And obviously, those that have closer areas would be less vital than those that are in a large area that covers a large span. So location would probably be number two. And number three, my district, my firm would look at would be to look at the projections to see what the numbers show for long-term because there might actually be some areas in your district that grow more than others. So if I'm putting together some factors about how to determine the six schools to close, that would be it.
Thank you for now.
Okay.
Ms. Raymond?
Oh, thank you. And I want to thank you for all of this data. It's actually, there's a lot of data here, and I'm wondering, actually, if we can get an updated copy of the PowerPoint because the one that we got Friday, there are slides that you showed us that weren't in our packet. And I'd like them because, to me, it sounds like this is a bigger question than one elementary school. This is a question about kind of master planning for our community over the next 30 years, and it, to me, it goes beyond our board in talking about, you know, what is the city planning? I mean, are we still going to develop more and more, you know, rental housing that is not attracting families or not? I would very much like to share some of this information with our planning and zoning boards and our Board of Aldermen so that they can look at those bigger questions. But my question is, based on the information that you have given us... So we asked you to do... I'm sorry, I'm trying to articulate it properly. We asked for two things. One was to take a look at moving lines for middle schools to minimize splitting and, you know, put our kids equitably in the three middle schools. And I think we're, have a good plan for that. But now for the elementary schools, as I'm looking at the data and as I was looking at the enrollment data, it sounds like we're still in a place of where what your recommendation is is not, even with the middle schools, it sounds like you're suggesting we don't need three middle schools, we only need one high school. So now, I guess my question is, how would you, how do you come up with which schools on your recommendation of closing schools? Like when you came up with that last map, like how did you determine which ones?
Actually, I determined what makes the most logical sense to logistically move the students there, which one's closest, and how many would fit into the facility. Now, to get the full list of closures, you'd need to do much more analysis than this. You'd need to look at, see what the condition of the building is, and probably a dozen other factors.
Right.
So this was just basically, could these be done physically based on the number of students you could fit in the building? Yeah, it could be.
Okay. All right. So I think I just, I need to absorb this more.
Let me also mention that the PowerPoint is not the end of our work with your district. When the lines are finally drawn and the final scenario is finished, then we will produce a final report that will include all your new projections by the new school lines. And that's what we're waiting for. We've got the report, we had the report finished in March, except for that one piece. So we will have a final report for you. It's about, gee, I forgot, 130, 150 pages.
But you need to know, in order to generate that report, you need a vote from us on what the line will be?
What the lines will be, whether it's middle school,[1696.83] What the lines will be, whether it's middle school, elementary, or both. And when those votes occurs, then we'll be able to do the projections based on where the new lines are.
It feels like the report would be helpful in making the vote.
We gave preliminary projections of what the enrollment would be by school. We've done that. And that's not going to change until you make a change to the lines.
Okay. I have more questions, but I think they're more for Dr. Andre. Thank you.
So you have Ms. Lampier, Ms. Darling, and then Ms. Gilio, and then Ms. Johnson.
So in your key findings of the projected decrease in enrollment, is projected private school growth part of the figures?
No, we didn't project the growth in private school at all. We looked at your district.
Because the thing is, is that New Hampshire, right now, is led by someone at the Department of Education that has not, not really a big fan of public education. And he's helped institute a new law, one of the most radical voucher programs in the country. And if they're trying to weaken public schools with this voucher program, we are not going to help them by closing some of our elementary schools. It's not going to happen. Sorry, I didn't have a question.
Who did? Ms. Darling, next?
So this actually might end up being a question for Dr. Andre, too. I was kind of going off of what Ms. Oden had said about, has our ELL population declined specifically them?
We did not look at a subpopulation at all in our projections. And we, there's no reason we could project that, because often, subgroups, we have districts that ask us, want to do all ethnic groups. And we're like, you could have three Native American students attending your high school, and all of a sudden, you could have three more, and all of a sudden, that's 100% increase. So when you have subpopulations that are small, it's very difficult to do on a per-school basis.
I mean, I absolutely can understand what you're saying. But I do think that seeing here, apparently since the year 2000, the size of immigration has been continuously getting higher during election years. And we're coming into an election year. So I wonder if that could be projected.
I mean, I do not want you to discount our overall projections with the hope and prayer that this one population is going to save your district.
It's not one population. It's quite a few populations.
Our projections are going to be correct.
Your website says within 1%, right?
Three tenths of a percent is what we're at now.
All right.
But I'm telling you, subpopulations-
Can this vote wait a year to see if the rate is accurate?
If you want us to do an analysis of the ELL, I'll be glad to do that before we finish our final report. And I'll show you that there is, it may have increased on a percentage basis. But at the same time, when that group has increased, you've probably had other groups decrease.
That would actually be really interesting information, if that's something that's doable without-
I can pull those numbers. I can do that analysis. But I'm not going to do a projection based on that population.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Ms. Gilio?
Could you go back to your last slide with the map and the key findings of what the district would look like if we closed four elementary schools, please?
Sure.
Okay. And looking at this map, because it's so small, it's really hard for me to determine which four elementary schools are missing here. Which four elementary schools are you closing to create this map?
This will show you. This will be closing Broad Street, Mount Pleasant, New Searls, Sunset Heights. Those would be the four.
Can you say that again, please?
Well, here it is. Broad Street, Mount Pleasant, New Searls, and Sunset Heights. And the only reason those were picked was just for pure logistics and to see if the remaining schools could absorb the population. That was it. I basically wanted to show you that it could be done.
So those aren't recommendations?
No, it's not my recommendation. It's just to show you that it would be possible.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, I would like to ask a couple of board members here, I think Ms. Oden, Ms. Raymond. You were here when the middle school was being proposed. Did anybody do an analysis of this with Dr. Mosley, showing what was the population going to be if it was going to be declining? Because we just spent a lot of money on that middle school. We had a tour of it a week ago Friday, which, we go last Friday, which is beautiful. It's a gorgeous school. It's really high on one end, which the neighborhood wasn't supposed to have that height. So we've got that height. It's marvelous, going to be an excellent school. But when you look at these numbers, the decline, the question becomes, we're building a huge school. Are we going to have the population in 10 years for enough students to be in there? We could have probably renovated more, Mount, Penachuck, and also Fairgrounds Middle School, probably used our air rights and gone up and made it bigger. And we wouldn't have had to put the expense in. And I haven't even spoken to the consultant. It's just common sense, I guess, here that we're talking about. Joint Special agreed on this. Why didn't we do these numbers, this projection here? Because look at this. How many millions of millions of dollars are we putting into a new middle school that can become obsolete in 10 years? The question doesn't become whether or not we're having vouchers and we're trying to kill public education. It's not about that, because we're so aggressive that we have education funds here. Parents are pulling the kids out for whatever reason that they want. But when you look at this, I want to know, did Dr. Mosley, did anybody on the board, when this was, whole thing was proposed, or Joint Special, do anything like this? Can somebody answer me?
I think it's a valid question. And I think your point is also very valid. And I, looking at these numbers and the trends that Mr. Smith is projecting, like my, my heart, like, is skipping a beat. I have all these butterflies in my stomach and anxiety about the future. At the time when we were embarking on the middle school project, which is going back five years now, I think, we did pull, I think, 20 or 30 years of enrollment and population data. Now, that was pre-pandemic and pre-other things, and I think that we've had a significant drop. I think there was also discussion about bringing kids back into the middle school if we had modern facilities that could actually do modern education. But I would have to go pull all of the minutes to get the actual, you know, the meat we got. I mean, I have this book that's like this fat of all the data that we got at the time. And as you know, the JS SBC has 10 members, you know, five board members and five alderman members. And those have changed significantly over the last five years.
I think, not to interrupt, but I think the answer to the question is no. This was not, we did not do a comprehensive study on whether, on this enrollment. The enrollment, because if you watch me every year on this board, when I was on the Board of Education in 2000, 2001, and when I was on the Board of Aldermen from 2002 to 2005, my questions were always, what is the enrollment figures? I want it going back five to 10 years, five to 10 years. That is your history. And since then, enrollments have never picked up. They have been declining ever since. And what our consultant is saying is 100% right. People don't move into the city with children to live in apartments. They want homes. There is zero, basically, inventory in Nashua. And if there is any inventory, you're going to see multiple bids, that if the house starts at $420,000, it's going to end by at least $450,000 to $470,000. It is unaffordable housing. But what's coupled with the unaffordable housing is you throw our new taxes in there. Some homes went up to $7,100, if not more. So you're asking people to move into a city, and while enrollment is declining, and we don't have any homes for anybody that's affordable, whether it's an apartment or whether or not it's a single-family home. We're building, but it's not enough. If you look through the city, it's apartments that are going up. So I'm looking at this, Ms. Raymond's saying her heart is beating. I'm sick over this. We've just poured so much money into this for something that our enrollment is declining. Whether you have this education vouchers or not, these kids are not coming back. They might come back at high school, like when you put their kids into the parochial school, the elementary or middle school, they're not here, and they come in at high school. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, I could add two points. What I was trying to point out is that your new middle school is almost twice the size of Penachuck. It's incredibly large for a middle school. It's actually the size of a high school. And what I'm talking about tonight are decisions that really should have been made about 10 years ago, because you would have had the data from 2000 to 2010 to show the trend. So it's really about the 2010, 2012, it should have been, when these decisions should have been made. I mean, I hate to money more than a quarter back, but what I'm telling you are really decisions that were in the rearview mirror a very long time ago. And let me add, someday, you will be looking at closing six schools, whether it's going to be five years from now or 10, but it will happen. There's no doubt in my mind. And you could today close Fairgrounds Middle School and still have capacity left over between the two middle schools today.
I mean, today seems harsh.
Ms. Oden?
I'm sorry. I don't want to tell you this. I realize we're talking about jobs. We're talking about students. But I'm telling you that these are mistakes that have been made.
Ms. Oden?
Yeah, thank you. And I look at your projections into the future, where, boy, the grade 12 students are going to decrease by 38%. The high school numbers are going way down. And I understand that. But I want to talk about what we have now. When you look at square footage, you see how many students are in a school, they can fit there. You know, we've made tremendous medical advances. We have kids in the schools that we never had before. I would say, because I'm familiar with Amherst Street, probably the largest classroom at Amherst Street, probably if anybody's from Amherst Street, I don't know, but there's probably seven kids in there, intensive needs, kids that have very large chairs, so they can walk down, sitting in this chair down the hallway to get to a classroom. We have had students in, at Amherst Street that had come with a nurse and a para. The last time I was there, there were seven students in the largest classroom at Amherst Street. And I would guess any of our other schools that have intensive needs programs or specialized programs, you cannot look at the square footage just as you would for regular students.
You're 100% correct.
Thank you.
And we can't. And we do not include those in our calculations.
I call, I call on me. One of the things that we look at in regards to, you know, our students and what we can, what we can provide for them is in regards to the cost per pupil. What happens to the cost per pupil if we decrease the amount of schools to better meet their needs and to be more responsible with our budget? Are we increasing the cost per student? Is that fair to-
Actually, I've not crunched the financial side. I defer to the district administration on that question. But I would think the economies of scale will come into play, that they'd be more prudent and more efficiently used. But I'll defer to the administration.
Dan, you want this one? But you almost answered the question. It's, you know, the more that we spread out, the cost per pupil goes up.
Well, but if you, if you decrease costs, then you're going to decrease the cost per pupil. I mean, that's-
But if we kept with the same budget and we decreased the overhead cost for the students, how much more money goes back to the student in regards to resources, books?
Well, I mean, assuming the budget number doesn't change and you save money in one, then you could move it over. That, that would be kind of difficult to figure out off the top of my head. But-
Yeah.
Because the cost, you know, what's the savings if you close a school? Most of the cost of a school is in the staffing, right? So you're going to eliminate all the staffing. The staffing that, just say, Mount Pleasant's about $2.7 million of salary, throw benefits on top of that. You know, that's like $4 million in staffing and benefits at the school. Now, are you going to save every single person? Probably, probably not. You know, then there's other costs like electricity and heat, things like that you would save. So I've just begun looking at that. But with the system being down, I haven't had a lot of access to information.
And what are we looking at in regards to open teacher spots within the district? Are we still, I mean, I know when we started off the school year, we had a significant amount of open spaces. Would we be able to put teachers into already open spots and fortify those schools that are lacking in staffing?
Yeah. So I think as far as regular education teachers, it's not as many openings. I mean, I think Mount Pleasant, if we say it's Mount Pleasant, I think those teachers would secure positions within the district. I'm fully confident in that. And it would be a position that would, a retiring teacher or a teacher leaving the district. So I think that's where the savings would be found. I think we're, we have still vacancies with our para educators, our food service. We would, that economy of scale would help. So where we have those vacancies, the para educators or our food service people would be able to provide a service in a different position. So that's where the vacancies currently are as opposed to our special education or ELL, not so much like a grade two teacher.
Well, I'm thinking, I mean, we heard, we heard so much from the paras and, you know, teachers during the teacher contract, but I'm specifically thinking of the paras, is how many of them came in here and said the job was so hard because they were doing the work of three people within their school. And that was obviously burning them out, and it was creating a more challenging day. If we're able to consolidate and bring more paras into the school, we could theoretically keep more paras longer because they're not doing the work of three people. And then we have, we have our, you know, retention and it provides an overall better feeling at the end of the workday if you're not overextending yourself too much.
And the other thing, too, that we just don't know until we have the lines, is if we have to open up new classrooms in a different building, right? So right now, we're just saying there's no openings, for instance, at like Charlotte. But if we, if the lines are redrawn and there's another 25 students at Charlotte in grade two, we'll have to open up another classroom at Charlotte possibly. So I think that's what we still have to consider on what the staffing's going to look like.
Ms. Lampier?
I think it's pretty clear to everyone that I'm not comfortable with any part of this redistricting. We've heard from, we've heard from several different school districts, people that are very unhappy about their children being moved somewhat arbitrarily, it seems like, especially by Centennial and Broad Street, that their kids will be, now be walking to Broad Street across a busy, a busy road. I think that part of the problem here is that we're looking at children as, and let me quote from this, one of your slides. It says, "Our data vendor estimates that the district's market share of available school-aged students has fallen from 89% to 70.5%." Students, children, are not a market share. We're thinking about them in terms of money, in terms of market, in terms of financial. We're not talking about the human, you know, the social, the human capital that we have. I went to Mount Pleasant and I was asked to see their seclusion room. And their seclusion room was filled with stuff. It's used as a storage room, but it's not used for seclusion. And this is after these children who are in one of the lowest income districts in the school, in the school district. And they've been through the trauma of the COVID and everything else, and all the anxiety the kids have now. And their seclusion room isn't being used. To me, that is priceless. And so I just don't think that we're looking at this from, with the best interest of our kids. We're looking at financial. And I know that people will say, oh, your heart, not brain. But I do think that it needs to be considered. And I don't think that we should redistrict our schools right now, our elementary schools. I don't think it's necessary. And I don't think any of the kids in the district should have to go through this redistricting right now after COVID. And with the, you know, and with the middle school just redistricting coming up, they're already going to have to go to different middle schools. Why change the elementary schools right now? It's not necessary. And so, once again, I don't have a question. I'm sorry.
Ms. Darling?
Regan did actually remind me of something. It's, I am very much about the financials and the data first, because that's kind of part of what our job is here. But at the same time, somebody pointed out to me today that the kids today are very different than the kids 10 years ago, 20 years ago. We're no longer creating little factory assembly workers. We're creating these human beings that think for themselves and use critical thinking and use things like kindness, magic, right? So it's, I feel like the ratios that we have, saying that teachers can take on more and they can take on more, when we've heard so many teachers say this year that they feel like they're drowning. I mean, I can't imagine coming to work feeling like I'm drowning every day and knowing I still have 20 something days left. And so, I mean, I agree with Regan. We're not, we can't look at this just from a financial standpoint. The human capital is important. And what the jobs that they're doing are very different than I think any of us are used to from when we were students. Sorry, I also don't have a question.
I don't think we're done with the question and comments. I just think everybody's collecting their thoughts. So I'm giving everybody just a minute. Ms. Gilio?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. To say that I'm shocked by this would, would not be an exaggeration. When we first met with you, before this was a public matter earlier on, you, we were told that possibly we would be, we could consider closing two elementary schools. Then we came forth with all of these recommendations that you made, these different maps with only Mount Pleasant being closed. Now you're saying that we need to close four elementary schools? I kind of find this like a scare tactic. And I can't, I want to know what happened between the last six weeks-
And I can't, I want to know what happened between the last six weeks when we first met with you and you said that we might need to close one school or two, to come up to the point where we need to close four elementary schools? And in the worst case scenario, you're closing a high school and a middle school. I just find it's very hard to digest. That's my statement.
Well, as I said, the six schools were, was not a recommendation. That was only to show you what could be, could happen based on your square footage and your future enrollment. The one or two schools, I do think probably right now, in retrospect, it might have been easier to close two schools this year instead of one, if you're going to close one, because still your enrollment is still way out of balance and way out of whack. And that's why so many of the numbers don't seem to make sense right now, even if you look at closing one. So if I, as I think I recall, I said, I don't think I made a firm recommendation one way or the other. It's just still your vote. I'm just telling you what's possible.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm trying to go back through all my slides and I'm, I'm struggling. Can we, can you pull up the one that shows the varying enrollments at the different schools?
Is that based on the square footage at the end?
Maybe.
Well, yeah, why don't you go where we had the four different methods?
Because I was trying to decide, so when we were going through all of this and, and at the community forums, one of the things that, or just one of the things that I've been concerned about is the difference between.
Go the other way, Dan.
Student, the student teacher ratio at various schools? And how many, like, I know we have classrooms in some schools that are very small, like, you know, 10 kids, 13 kids in a classroom. And I know we have other classrooms that are very large at the elementary school level, like 23 kids per teacher. And I'm just, I'm, I'm curious about equity and about if the proposed changing of the lines addresses that and how it addresses it, I guess.
Well, the truth is, as committee, when we, I worked with the redistricting committees, we didn't look at equity or try to balance as much as what we probably would like. And for the middle schools, the main criteria was the free and reduced percentages. And we felt like that we had accomplished that purpose. For the elementaries, there's no way, Dan would be right, probably the next, the third to last slide at the bottom.
Okay.
For the elementary schools, we could not anywhere near reconcile free and reduced percentages because as neighborhood schools, there's too much variation in your district, even as small as your district is.
Right.
But as I said, the balancing of your enrollment is, is still not completely equitable because even if you pull Mount Pleasant out of the mix, we still try to keep the current enrollments fairly close to, after we drew the lines and tweaked them. So they're still imbalanced, even under the current scenarios. So equity was not accomplished.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying, I'm thinking out loud at this point, and I'm thinking about what we've said about making sure we have enough para professionals to, for the kids who need them and, you know, I know we have.
I mean, look what you have right now in your enrollment. You got one school here with 62,000 square feet with 250 students, and you've got one here with 65,000 square feet. That says 502. There's nothing equitable about that. You've got twice as many students in that with almost only 3,000 square feet difference.
Right, and I know Broad Street has our most intense intensive needs program, and so I would expect that they need a higher student teacher ratio because of the needs of those kids. And that's, that's part of the thing about public school. We have to meet kids where they're at, which means that, you know, when we have kids who have extraordinary needs, we have to provide them extraordinary supports when we have, and that goes on the entire spectrum. Kids who have behavioral and learning needs and then kids who also need to be more challenged. We have to meet those kids where they're at too. So it makes our jobs very challenging, I think. And I'm saying are as though I am a teacher and I have any part of that, but it makes teachers' jobs very challenging. I think, for me, I think I need to sit down with this data and really think about it and get the feedback. I got some of the feedback from the forums, but, you know, a compilation of the feedback from the forums and then also from administration about now that we have all of this enrollment data, what does that mean for our district? And what does that mean for making sure that we are, because at the end of the day, it's important to me that we are utilizing our staff in a way that is effective and that meets the staff's needs because you can't pour from an empty cup. But at the bottom line is that we meet the needs of the kids that we have and we're also planning for the next kids. And I, it makes me want to kind of put pause on any major decisions for renovations or anything else until we have some sort of a strategic plan. And I don't think our five-year strategic plan we made five years ago covers any of this.
No, that was more social emotional, but I think that one of the things that we were trying to do tonight is, is take this, we have historically been a board that thinks and questions and participates in this discussion, which is why we were just doing the presentation tonight and we can review, review the information and think about it so that we're making the best decision possible, but.
And I'm sorry, I keep turning that way, but it's because the screen is that way. It's not, I don't mean to be rude and turn my back to you.
That's fine.
Mr. Claffey?
I want to turn this way. So looking at, I was looking at a couple of different slides for this, the current school year's population and I, early on, we had 9708 as the current district population. And then later I see 9828. And then the last, the last slide, we have 10,390. So which one of those is most accurate?
I mean, there are some cases where we include the pre-K in order to count for the students in the building. And in our projections, we do not include pre-K because we can't project pre-K enrollment. So that's why you have the variation in the different totals. It's because we had to throw out the pre-K.
Okay, I just, it's, it's a difference of about 500 students.
Right, and it'd be probably around pre-K enrollment, wouldn't that be right?
Yes, and the other thing is the October 1st enrollment, which historically we've compared year to year because it's the same point in time, that number, October 1st of 2022 of this school year was about 9,950, let's say it was somewhere around there. But that, that's kind of where it is. If you run these numbers three months later, they could go up, they could go down. I mean, there's changes every month within the district.
Yeah, it was just the, toward the end of the slide, no relationships between enrollment growth and new construction. I just thought, if you're looking at trends, I don't know if you can, I have, I think it's page 17, but it's the new construction and enrollment. It doesn't say whether it includes pre-K, but if you're looking at a trend.
Okay, right there.
Yes, that's it.
The average, that's the average district enrollment. That's over the last, what, 20 years?
Yep.
So that, all right, so that one, 10, 10, 360.
And then.
That'd be for the school year ending 2022.
And that's, I mean, I don't know whether it's people coming back after COVID, but to see a jump from negative turf to positive 582, that jumped out at me. I don't know if that's the beginning of a trend.
I wouldn't, no, I would call it the beginning of the trend. It probably is after COVID, you have a few more students come back.
And I also want to ask about the retirement slide. Would you predict that, it looked like a lot of South Nashua has an aging population. I'll be adding to the over 60 up north, but just based on, this is, this is not statistically sound research, but in my neighborhood, just like in the last couple of years, a couple of older people moved out, kids are moving in. So if you see, that's pretty big. Would you expect that to free up housing for families with children?
No, I don't, because when we actually match students to each address to get, if you're at what kind of housing they live in, we're not seeing any kind of indication of there's a turnover kind of thing. What they call that, like reseating, when you have older folks move out and new people move out, that's just not happening. You have too low a percentage of young families that move into the district. And let me caution you, I'm looking at all these maps, that's a percentage increase, but you probably have a very sparse population down there because you could have, say you got 1,000 and you have a 40% increase, that could take it to 1,400. So you're only talking an increase of maybe 400 people in each of these big census block areas. But that's why you can have a giant percentage increase, but statistically, you might be not talking about that many people.
That's, I mean, I know from, this is just from my regular work in the medical field, the silver tsunami, we call it, is the aging population that's going to take a lot of our resources in the next 10 years. We don't even have enough places to put, you know, mom and dad when they need to go. And at an average of $15,000 a month for long-term care, there's not a lot of, I mean, people end up staying in their homes because it's cheaper. But this is, I mean, population growth and increasing and decreasing is a huge issue in New Hampshire. We have no way to meet, it almost feels like we have no way of meeting the kids' needs or our seniors' needs. So we're going to be in a deficit even more so once that population hits, you know, the state's budget floor.
Those were good questions. That was good insight to catch those number differences, but that's why they're there.
Ms. Laimbeer?
So I have a question about this slide. I looked at it and you can see that the jump from 2010 to 2022 is from 15 to 23,000. And that's huge. And.
It's a tsunami.
Yeah, but you can see that it's, it's slowing down. It looks like it's slowing down. Is that just me? I mean, from, between 2022 and 2032, it's not as big a climb as between 2010 and 2022. It just seems like the change isn't going to be as drastic as maybe.
Well, I think maybe it's because the overall population is slowing down, but what's significant here is the percentage of the overall population increase. I mean, you're seeing a 5% increase here of where it's going to be of the overall population.
But when you compare that to between 2010 and 2022, it's a lot flatter.
Well, because probably your overall population is going to decrease or slow down.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Thank you. So first of all, I am glad that we're not making a vote on this tonight because I think it does take, it's a lot of information and it's a lot to digest. I do feel badly for you because I think you're kind of the messenger telling us information that none of us want to hear. And I recognize that closing six schools is not really a recommendation. It is just to demonstrate what is possible if we were trying to be just efficiency, efficiency was our bottom line. And I think everyone in this room is very passionate about making sure that efficiency isn't the only thing we look at. We're also looking at the passion of our community and the overall personality of Nashua and what we value in the city, which is education. However, I do think that, or I guess in addition to, I think you've made a pretty honest representation of what the numbers are saying here in the city as far as growth. And it's not something that's just been happening in the last two years, five years, or just COVID caused things like that. The affordability index has been dropping since 2013. That's a decade of growth or of downward trends. We've got evidence going back to 1990 that's regarding our job growth in Nashua and our school growth. It peaked in the early 2000s, but it's been on a downward trend consistently, even though job growth is going up, we're just haven't been for now almost 15 years, have not been attracting young families. And, you know, to say that a healthy school district is using their space effectively at about 85% or more and where our utilization rate is only about 63%, you know, that's a pretty scary intimidating number. And I think the other one that I was really shocked by personally was the 11% of our students, only 11% of our students live in homes over $350,000, but the median sales price for a home in Nashua right now is $440,000. That's, I mean, and that's just current students. That's not even future students moving in. Like I said, I'm really glad that we're getting some time to digest this information before we move forward to the decision. And I also recognize that your not recommend, your, this, your not recommendation isn't like, you know, harpoon at all. But I think as a board, we have to really consider that this isn't a knee-jerk reaction. This is a serious consideration of long-term data. It's not just something that just came together in five minutes or even in five years. And I did want to say in regards to waiting on this decision, again, I'm just going to throw out my opinion because this isn't a question either, thank you. I think we should wait and digest, but I think that waiting to do a redistrict a year from now, two years from now, five years from now, after we've already moved the middle school, would be folly because it's just going to be more heartache on the families that take this very seriously. My own neighborhood is being disrupted and I don't think anyone takes any of this lightly when it comes to the fact that they're going to changing the culture of the communities in Nashua. And I don't necessarily think it's all for the, I don't think it's all bad, it's just going to be different. And I think doing that twice or three times over the next three to five years would cause more heartache than it is right now. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the things that we have to remember is we hired you to consult us and to look at all of the available information correctly and with your expertise. It's not, it wasn't me in my basement, like.
Well, Ms. Bishop, let me point out that my contract was a flat fee and I get paid regardless you close a school or not. And it was not part, I did not charge extra for any of the work that we did on redistricting for the schools on closing, and there was no additional fees at all.
Yeah.
So, close or not, my fee is flat fee and it was set back in December.
Right, you gave us, you gave us the information that we needed.
It's not like I get a commission or anything like that.
No. None of us do.
Ms. Laimbeer?
I just, I would be remiss if I didn't say that, you know, it's notable that you didn't include special, kids with special education, and I understand that that's hard to predict. But kids with special education are a huge growing part of our population and they're a growing part of populations across the country. Autism rates are growing and, and kids with serious disabilities are living longer lives. So I think that maybe in the future, it might be viable to include them in studies like this, just because kids with disabilities should be counted too. So, thanks.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Oden?
I'm sorry, thank you. What, what, and I've asked Dr. Andre, I would like to see each school broken down, how many classrooms, how many students at each grade level in each classroom, and the projections through the coming years, what it would be? The class size? I'm real interested in class size.
I actually think we started compiling that back when Ms. Zim was on the board and we wanted to know what classroom sizes were with COVID and absences. So that may even be a living document that.
Well, we, we had a document, the board used to get a document. Elthea Schiff was responsible for it and Karen Krebis kept it going, but we used to get a document that listed each school, how many first grade classrooms, how many students in each classroom. That would, that would be helpful. I want to see the impact of what closing a school would, would be like. Okay.
So just for the document that you received this morning or over the weekend, just a continuation of that?
Yes. The one from Mr. Foster?
Yes.
That's color coded.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I haven't gotten any email. I don't, I can't get into, I can't get into my account.
So there is a, yeah, so there is an old form, but we can recreate that and then.
I know Stacy Hines said she, she had it on a drive, but she couldn't find the drive. But that would be very helpful, looking at concrete numbers for us. Thank you.
Just, I believe each year it's been in the budget book. And I think like a year or two ago, I started, because someone brought up Ms. Zim. That was back when we were looking at class sizes of 27, 28. Last year or the year before, I did an analysis, I believe I shared it with the board, but I'm not sure. There were, you know, the, the class sizes significantly dropped. There were maybe seven classes over 22 kids in the whole district. This is elementary, K to 5 now.
Right.
So we do, I think most of that info is available.
Okay, I'll go home. I have my budget book. I'll go home and look for it, thank you. But I still would like the projections into the future. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. We also got this, what was it, 30-year plan from Mr. Smith? And it talks about Mount Pleasant just this year to do the security, the comprehensive renovation, that's the security, the comprehensive renovation.
Is that stuff that we can talk about in public?
No.
No.
Not, the $25 million.
25 million.
That's the cost of the $20 million reno if we do it in 2026. That's the cost of the $20 million reno if we do it in 2026.
Oh, okay. That's a $20 million reno?
Yep.
That's going to be, but that doesn't cover everything that has to be done in that school. Am I correct?
I think.
Yeah, that doesn't include the, the security upgrades. That was the study from 2018.
Okay, this is from 2018.
Can we make sure that that document, even if it just says draft on it, is included in the meeting minutes and the materials online?
Because I'm asking again, and I spoke to Dr. Andre before the meeting, that I think everybody on the board needs to get the full comprehensive cost to bring that school up to standards of today. Because nothing's going to be grandfathered once you get in there. So everything's going to have to be updated. If there's elevators, if anything for handicapped accessibility, all of that's going to have to be upgraded. And I've also said that, you know, when we renovate schools, a lot of time, we piecemeal everything. And by the time you're done piecemealing it, you have to start all over again because now everything is obsolete. So I'm going to ask for this whole bit comprehensive plan. And I'm just looking at this. This is, you know, deferred maintenance, a million dollars a year, where we have $13 million worth of deferred maintenance at this time, because we don't get anything from the capital improvement committee. I mean, this really, you just can't catch up. You just keep falling further and further behind when you have big projects that have to be taken care of. So I think that's something important that we have to take a look at, the full renovations of Mount Pleasant. Because if you're going to keep the school open and you're going to renovate it, it all has to be done at once, not piecemealing, because it's just not going to work. Thank you.
Okay. So, oh, Ms. Gilio?
Okay. Just a couple of things. I don't know that we completely addressed something that Ms. Oden brought up, which is about the people at the Amherst Street School who need larger, who need a larger space. And, and it sounds like they weren't included, and neither were the pre-K children. And I'm wondering who else might have been left out. We've had a huge increase in the number of ESL students that we have, from 798 in 2017 to now over 1,800. I'm wondering if other groups were not included in this, if these numbers are not completely representing the actual students that come to our schools every day. That's my first thing. The second is, I'm glad we're not voting tonight. I think it would be impossible for us to vote tonight. And originally, we were scheduled to vote tonight. I also want to bring up that the state is currently funding for students to go to private and, and other schools. And it's a pretty controversial system right now, with a lot of opponents to it. And they are just, they've gone into increasing the income of the people who qualify now to get reimbursed for sending their children to private schools, which in my mind is saying, people who for years had plenty of money, were able to send their kids to private school, now all of a sudden, our tax dollars are going to go help pay them back for sending their kids to private schools. I think that that's something that's not going to be carried forward. I think that there's enough controversy about that, that that's going to change things looking forward. And I don't think we can base what we're going to do next year on that kind of arrangement. I'm, I'm sure that is why we have not recouped after COVID. We have not gotten back most of the students who left us at that time. And so I just, I wanted that all to be brought up. And I'm done. I don't have a question.
Madam President?
Mr. Cluffy?
Look, just looking at spreadsheets, and I'm looking at the, the slide, the bottom says the projected decreases range from 3.4 in third grade. Can you pull that one up? I can't.
Slide 2 or 3?
Key findings is the title. I'm just.
Well, we all have that, but it's right at the root.
Oh, there's a, it's, it's projected, you have from 2022 all the way to 2032.
Right. By, by grade.
Yes.
Reason why I didn't put the date in there, by school, is because we haven't redrawn the lines yet. That's the one piece that is missing. But we did do the grade projections.
That is it. So I just was.
This is the medium range. So it's a, be like a, what, a 15% drop, thereabouts.
So I was reminded of our union pay schedule. It might be more confusing than this, but I was thinking about, if I, if I, if I take a student, let's say I was looking at 28, 29, and I see, where was I looking? I was looking, it was just a huge decrease from an eighth grade class to the 10th grade class. And I was wondering, what happened to those? I don't know what the, the model generates, the metric or whatever it generates, but it looked like there's, if you follow an eighth grade student.
649 to 759?
Yeah, so let's, yeah, right, go to 590, go to 20, 2027 to 28. Yep, eighth grade student, 593. Then we have a huge increase going to ninth grade. And I, I'm, you can, I don't know why.
Can you explain that?
Can't? Or you can?
I can't.
Yeah. But then we have a decrease. And that happens, if you go to, go to the, go to 2027, 28, and then go to ninth grade, 819. You see the 819 to the left? Yep. So we have a freshman in that year, 2027, 28. And then by junior year, right, we're down to 597. What happened to those students?
The same thing's happened the last 20 years. They leave the district. You have a decrease of that magnitude. You do not retain students. The reason you have the big jump from eighth grade to ninth grade is pretty simple. Because you've got homeschool and private school kids that want to come play football at the big high schools, the public school. So they enroll. Every district in the country has that kind of jump from eighth to ninth grade. Our models are correct because you, you have that kind of decline that happens. They either go to private school, they leave the district, or they drop out. There's many things that can happen to students along that way. But this is a trend that's happened for 20 years. This has been going on. We, we didn't develop these new models just out of, out of whole cloth. This is what's gone since 2000.
Yeah, I guess if I had seen.
If you've seen my grade breakdowns for 20 years, it's the same pattern. I hire statisticians that crunch these numbers. I don't do this.
I understand.
And they're, they're independent of the kind of data that I collect. So they, they do their modeling in almost a vacuum. I give them the raw data. They have no, the biases that I might have. And they, they generate this.
So this year's freshman class, we have 970.
Yep.
By the time their juniors were down to, this predictor will be down to 761.
200, fewer.
I'm not, I can't, I mean, it's a forecast. I just wasn't aware of that decline when I was a high school teacher.
If you'd like me to give you a spreadsheet that goes back 20 years, it shows.
Oh, I'm not, I'm just, I just thought you'd, I was not questioning at all. I just wasn't aware of that huge decline when I was a teacher, but maybe the trends accelerated.
I mean, if you like to live in a, a world that says 20 years ago, this didn't happen, and enrollment was, was, was bigger in 20, and it hadn't changed much, that would just not be true.
How do we lose 200 students in two years?
Let me also make one key point, that when our firm makes projections, and when we actually miss, our biggest misses are when we are more optimistic than what actually happens. If we're projecting optimism aside 11%, your numbers may actually be a 15 or 20% decline. It's, it nearly always turns out to be worse than what we plan out.
I think it would be interesting to see, I mean, just kind of going along those lines, is figuring out which, if there's a pattern to the demographic that's leaving the city, and if there's a way, kind of big picture, to get them to stay. And that might be interesting information to have, because if we know it's, you know, people who are, just trying to pick something generic, but, you know, people who are leaving because, you know, they're getting paid better elsewhere. You know, if the, the pay rate versus property taxes is different elsewhere and it's dragging them away, that would be an interesting piece to follow, just, you know.
Well, I've worked with districts that had these questions, and I told them to call every single student that had left that didn't re-enroll for the next year. And they actually did do that project. They collected it for two years for me. And the analysis that we did beforehand was actually true. It bore it out of exactly what happened. We, we said, here's what we think is happening. But after they called those families over a period, two years period, it just verified that we were right.
I have a follow-up question for administration in regards to the, the questions about meeting the needs of our, our students who need more specialized care. If we were looking at changing, changing lines, putting kids into different schools, we would still take into account our special needs students and what they need, and we would make sure that they were placed in the most appropriate setting, whether we had 11 elementary schools open or two, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So, so again, I think it's hard tonight, again, like this is just raw data. But, you know, and we've heard it loud and clear in our community forums, you know, all our public comments from Mount Pleasant, and even here, it's like, it is student-first, right? And so we can't lose the sight of what is good education look like. And so that is the balance on, you know, on what is the best research out there, making sure that every student gets what they, he or she needs. And then what does that look like, kind of moving forward? So I think that goes without saying that it's always our students first, and what does good, high-quality programming look like and instruction? And then reallocating and moving the resources where they're needed. So I think that goes without saying. But we would make sure our special education population, our L populations, you know, reading services or whatever is going to be needed, actually is at the schools that our students are. So I think that goes without saying.
I think sometimes we just have to say them. Ms. Brown, and then I saw somebody else's hand over here.
I have a follow-up, kind of related to that. And would it be your intent to, during this transition period, as people are being shifted, to make sure that if students are going into fifth grade, that they would have kind of a waiver at whatever their current school is, as opposed to transitioning them as a fifth grader to a different school or something?
Yeah. So we, we've talked about this in a couple of community forums, like, you know, like, without the paintbrush, like the brush stroke of everybody gets a variance, but it's, we'll work with families individually to make sure that it's a smooth kind of transition. So, you know, even this upcoming fifth grade, or a sixth grader is going in, you know, depending on how we vote on the lines, that I don't want a student to move twice, right? So if they know that, depending on a line, that they might be slotted for Elm Street in the following year, they're at Penachak or Fairgrounds, can they start it, you know, in sixth grade with their incoming class? So I think we have to look at some of those variances and moving, you know, and just being soft on that stuff. So I think it's just working with families, because each family and each student might need a different need. So I think the next couple of years will be very flexible in working with families on what's best for that child. The high pot will be the transportation.
That was going to be my, my next question was, I don't want to let transportation hinder students from these, we'll have to talk about that big picture. But I also have a question about, so, some of the things that I had written down, and I'm sure everybody knows kind of the purpose of the community forums, and that was to guide you in the maps that you were going to present to us. The community forums weren't to get information to the board, they were to get information to you. So we didn't have access to these maps until the same time the community did, the end of, the end of the other week. So I've taken a peek at a couple of them and made notes where I have questions and concerns about splitting up neighborhoods that I would like to address and talk about, because we weren't a part of building, building the lines. At what point can we, as a board, say, this street isn't a made road, it goes through a neighborhood, let's move it two blocks over? How does, how does that work?
Well, I saw all the comments. I read through all the comments. It looked like we could eliminate about half the comments with about two tweaks. And what I would recommend or ask is if the board worked with me for an online session for an hour or two, and we go through and clean this up.
Okay.
And it'd be a matter of you jumping on the screen and saying, zoom in, here's a street name, move, move the line.
I have it highlighted, circled, numbered, and outlined on the second piece of the paper.
You've got a plan, so this should go quick.
I do have a plan.
So no, that's the way, that's the way I like to handle it. It worked well with committees when we worked online with them, and I'd like to do that with the board.
Okay. So that's, okay. And that takes into account what we're hearing, what we're, feedback we're getting, but also just, I mean, like, there was one neighborhood here, I was like, that's a, that's a side road, and we're leaving off a cul-de-sac.
Sure, no problem.
But, Ms. Laimbeer?
I just like to point out that in our emails and in the community forums, we didn't hear from, I guess, probably more than half of the elementary schools at all. I don't know, I'm not sure what the online forum was, but I would think it'd be pretty similar. So, like, I didn't receive anything from New Surles.
Just Bicentennial.
Or, yeah, there's a lot of schools that haven't even been considered. So these parents are being left out entirely of this conversation. So if they have any issues with the redistricting, we don't know. And, and some of the schools didn't even have people that came to the redistricting committee. They weren't included in that point either. And also, another thing is that if people are unhappy with the redistricting, we're going to push more families out of the public school because they will choose private school or charter schools for their children instead. And what we want to do is keep the kids in our school. So that's another reason why I don't think that this is the right time. But, yeah, no, I mean, we, if we could hear from everybody, and we could go through it with you, that'd be great. But if we, if we go through it with you, and we only are looking at like two or three of the eight problems, that's not really enough to address the issues.
Well, it's almost like a democracy of people who vote on election day, and 100% of the people vote. You'll hear from the people that want to turn out and have a say.
Yes, but we're here to speak for the people that don't turn out.
Ms. Johnson, Ms. Gilio, Ms. Oden?
I just have to say, and I agree with you, if people don't come out to vote, then they don't get who they want. If people don't come out in the forums, I mean, we could probably do another forum if more people come out, or maybe people are just happy. I don't know how many times I went to Board of Alderman meetings and these meetings, that I wasn't on the board and I spoke for myself, and nobody else came out. You can't read the minds of everybody. And I appreciate everybody came out and came to the forums. I went to two out of three forums. One of them I had to work, and I couldn't attend. And we heard from the parents who were upset. Because people don't come, that doesn't mean that they're upset. They might be happy with the boundaries. Because I think some of the, the schools that are on the other side of the highway, that I know my area, we were going to Led Street when my kids grew up, and they might be going to Main Dunstable, which the kids aren't going to now be bussed over the highway. So they might be very happy with this whole situation, because the kids aren't going to be on the bus as long, and they're not going over the highway. So we can't read the minds of everybody. If people are upset, I wish that they'll send us emails. But we also had a little problem with emails too, for a while. So.
Well, to be, to be fair, once mine opened back up, I didn't miss any emails. And I think I only received, like, I mean, there was a handful from Mount Pleasant, a couple from Bicentennial, but I think total over the last two weeks, it's been like 20 emails.
Yep. So I'm just bringing that up and just, you know.
If you go to any of the schools, drop-offs, pickups, and talk to any parent, 99% of them are going to tell you they have no idea that we're redistricting, talking about redistricting, talking about closing schools. I don't know how to get the message out to them better. But realistically, we have to be looking at the people that aren't showing up, because they're the ones who have no idea this is happening.
But that's not true, because there have been Board of Alderman meetings that nobody showed up, and I was one person who showed up. And it's out, they have, this has to be posted before the meetings. And it's on the website.
But you understand politics. The average person doesn't.
That was even before I understood politics.
Hold on, hold on.
Although I've been around for a while. I'm sorry, Ms.
So I think one of the things that.
I've just been around for a while.
Sorry, I just.
Because issues became important, and I found out about them. And that's one before we even had internet. That was newspaper.
Ms. Johnson, hold on. I just want to, I just want to say that a lot of times, our differences and where we come at from different things are just fundamental differences on how we view government. And there are some things that I don't think that we're ever going to get to the bottom of. Some people say we speak on behalf of the people that don't show up, and then some people say we speak on behalf of the people that are heard. We're never going to get to a common ground on that. And we each represent our own thoughts and differences, and we'll vote in the way that we believe. I don't think we need to go around and announce of which belief we are from, because that's. I don't think we need to go around and announce of which belief we are from, because that's not this discussion right now. But I appreciate the conversation, but I don't think right now that that's...
Okay, Mom, we'll stop.
Thanks, hon, okay. Ms. Gilio, then Ms. Oden.
I want to bring up something that I think requires administration to tell me if I'm talking about the current plan. I've been on, this is my fourth year on the Board of Ed, and I've been on the JSSBC all of the time I've been on it. And so in the early days, when we were talking about building the McCarthy Middle School, one of the things we did, and it is bigger than the other schools, is because we're going to have kind of a hub for special education children who previously we had to send out of district at great cost, because we did not have the ability to provide their needs. It's been my understanding that when the McCarthy Middle School opens in 2024, that we're going to have those programs in effect, and that even though this is probably a small number of population that's going to come back to our middle schools, is that still the plan, Dr. Andre?
That is. I mean, I think it's, it always has to be the least restrictive environment, so we always have that conversation. If we don't, if we can properly educate a student in-house, we won't send them out of district, and if we have the resources in district, we'll start sending kids back. But you're correct at McCarthy, there'll be programs there, and then, you know, and if we can do the same at the high school, again, if we can, the objective is always to educate our students in the least restrictive environment, and that's usually...
I think one of the things they added in McCarthy were several more Hoyer lifts, so that we could get kids who were more physically immobile into the schools, and then be able to get them situated in the big rolling chairs that Ms. Oden was talking about, so we can actually bring them into more classrooms and have them participate more often than just having them, I'm sure. Ms. Lamphier knows what I'm talking about, kind of in the more restrictive environment is, you know, get them into the classrooms and have them experience things that they wouldn't be able to experience, and because we built those things into McCarthy, we can do more. Ms. Oden.
Thank you. I just wanted to say to Reagan, I think why you're not hearing from New Surles, they're not moving. That's all one community, they're not really being affected by the redistricting. But I would like to thank Dr. Andre for hiring you. I think the skills you have brought, you've put the numbers in, a lot of us aren't crazy about them, but I think they're probably very accurate. I look at my own neighborhood, I used to have 18 kids at the bus stop, I don't even have a bus stop there anymore. The people, my kids have gone, we're still in the house, I have lots of neighbors, their kids have grown, left the state, and they're still in the house, and I have people buying these houses, and they have no kids. So I see it, reality in the neighborhood, so I...
We all see each other at Thanksgiving when we come home.
But, you know, nobody likes to hear bad news, and I guess we have to look at reality in what we're doing, and I think Ms. Johnson's right, this should have been done a long time ago. So thank you, Dr. Andre, I have a feeling you knew that things weren't going to look as perfect as we'd like them, but we do have to deal in reality, and I know lots of people in this room, their taxes have gone up. So it's reality, and I don't think we're the only city in New Hampshire that's looking at things like this, but thank you. I think it's been fairly thorough, there's some more things I'd like to see, I burdened you more with more things, but I think we have to look at this as closely as we can to make sure we're making the right decisions for our kids, for our staff, for our city, so thank you.
I agree, and I appreciate your insight, you've got my email, if you think of anything in the next week or two that you'd like to have in your final report, any of the board, email me, I'll be glad to work those ELL numbers, anything else that you'd like, I'll work with you. Because I want to make sure that when we're done, as I told the board in my very first meeting, it'd be my preference that I not have to come back here. I would appreciate that we can get the job done in one fell swoop, but apparently that is probably not going to happen. But I didn't do this to try to create a perpetual business for me for the next 10 or 15 years. I really wanted to work with your district and get as much done as we could in this one fell swoop. But thank you very much, Ms. Oden, thank you.
Thank you. I just want a little pin in what you said in regards to property taxes, is when property taxes go up, it's not just people who own houses, that money gets transferred back on to renters. We are seeing an average of $300 a month in rental increases for people who are typically working, you know, two, three jobs just to keep a roof over their head. So where property taxes, I think, for homeowners, and I'm friends with you guys, it's an inconvenience, but when you're looking at a $300 rental increase for people who are already working two jobs, that's adding three more shifts and less time with their kids. I mean, it's, I don't want to say, it's not apples and oranges, but I think that we need to take a look at, it's not just, it doesn't only hit one certain population when we're looking at increases. So I just want to make sure that we're representing everybody at the table. Okay, so I am going to say we're done with questions and comments, right? We okay? All right. Jeez Louise, that was a lot. We're going to bump into, I have to go back to my agenda. So we're going to go into our regular board meeting and do the consent agenda, but I am actually going to do a 10-minute recess, just because I think we need to turn the lights back on and just take a beat, we just had a really good discussion, and let's decompress for a second. So I'm calling a 10-minute recess, if somebody could, five-minute recess? All right, five-minute recess, quickly. We are going right into the consent agenda, so I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sub moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond, thank you, Ms. Gilio. On the motion to approve the consent agenda, all those say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
And that was Johnson, Brown, and Darling?
Yep.
Okay. So motion passes, items removed, communications. This brings us up to our first public question comment period. Okay, I'm going to remind everybody, I know I don't have to, but I will, just, let's stay nice. I already, Mr. Claffey gave it to me. So three minute, I'm going to ask Mr. Claffey to keep track of the three minutes, can you just holler at me when it's been three minutes? Okay. I'm sure your old proctoring capabilities are going to be incredibly helpful right now. Okay, so three minutes. Okay, so first up is Dave Tenza.
Members of the board, thank you very much for having me here.
Is the mic on?
No, it is, thank you. Dave Tenza, 10 Monica Drive. I am here just representing my neighbors in the Bicentennial School District, asking that you make a small tweak to the proposal, as I'm sure you folks are mostly aware of. We are currently, it's really a matter of quality of life for the kids, we're currently a walking school, walking neighborhood, and we're afraid that if this change is made, that it's going to change, if we're shifted to the New Surles District, it's really going to change things, and we will essentially become either a neighborhood that gets bused or parents drive their kids to the school, just because of the logistics of getting to New Surles. We also worry that the kids are making another transition, we don't believe that it's good timing for them now, or ever really, ever since Bicentennial and the neighborhood and the houses have been built, we've been part of the Bicentennial School District, so this would be the first time that we would be moved out of that district. I would also say that we don't believe there's any real need for this change. The school, although the school is one of the biggest in the city, it's not overcrowded. I'll point out, according to Mr. Smith's numbers, one of the possibilities has Bicentennial projections in 10 years, if he closes four schools, has over 600 kids in a school that only fits 540. So certainly, keeping those kids that are in the school now, which is that capacity, is consistent with the recommendations of your consultant. And then I'll also say, as far as the middle school is concerned, I think there is consensus among parents in the neighborhood that we would also like our kids to stay in the Bicentennial District so that they move on with their friends to Fairgrounds Middle School. We understand that if we were redistricted, we would go to the new middle school, McCarthy Middle School, but, you know, it's more important, I think, for consistency for the kids. I think we've all had great experiences at Fairgrounds Middle School with the teachers and the level of education, so we'd be more than happy if we, if our kids all continue to go to Fairgrounds. And then finally, just personally, generally, based on the comments that I heard tonight, I would also just like to say, I think this is a decision, I don't believe that the elementary schools need to be redistricted right now, clearly it's something that strategically down the line, the city is going to have to face. However, I think it's a much greater conversation than this board can have in the next couple of months. I think it's, I would say it's a community conversation involving parents, teachers, the Board of Alderman, and so I would hope that if there, I would hope that the school districts right now stay the same, in that if there are decisions being made, that they're done, not just based on the, sorry. That's okay. Not just based on the efficiencies, but based on what really is best for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Deborah Wall. Yeah, that was much louder than my phone. Mine's like, hello, excuse me, it's time to wake up.
Hello, Deborah Wall.
Thank you, Ms. Wall.
23 Huey Street. I have some notes on my phone just from earlier. I just want to start by saying that the size of 24, 25 for the elementary level is ridiculous across the board, so I think that we should not even consider that with closing of schools. When I was at the community forum at Mount Pleasant, several questions were asked, one being how the redistricting splits up the special ed students, and Dr. Andre replied with, it wasn't, and I'm paraphrasing, it wasn't necessarily split up by special ed students, they weren't split evenly, but it was done by free and reduced lunch numbers. Am I saying that correctly? That, to say that to a room full of parents of these students is extremely insensitive. It, and it doesn't necessarily correlate. It could, to a degree, but we need to look at the students and their needs more than just what their parents can afford. So to say to parents, "You don't make enough money, so your kid is special needs" with the stigma that is attached to that, is extremely insulting. So, moving forward, let's not talk like that, I guess is what I'm saying. So, my children, my son, my oldest, is 22, so he started in the district when he was four at Title I Nursery, and he went on to a title elementary school, Penachuck Middle School, Nashua North, both my kids. And this whole time, almost 20 years now, I've heard our kids be referred to as "those kids." I have recently heard, what happens if Mount Pleasant closes? Those kids will go to, some of them will go to non-title schools, some will be pushed to Amherst Street, the Amherst Street, those kids will be pushed further. That's three minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do I get any time to wrap up? No, I'm done.
Just really quickly.
Okay. Right now, these kids at Mount Pleasant, they go into a place where they're nurtured and loved, and the teachers want to be there, they want those students every day. I don't want them going to a school where they're not welcomed and loved and nurtured, and I don't want them to be thought of as "those kids." I have a lot more other thoughts, I didn't realize that was three minutes, so.
It goes fast.
That's my main point is...
Okay.
"Those kids."
Thank you. Johani Taveras.
Good evening. I'll probably get a little emotional. I'll probably have no idea of any of the graphics or any of your job, I just want to speak from the bottom of my heart. My daughter has been in Mount Pleasant since kindergarten. When she started, she was in the special education, because English is not her first language. Now she's in third grade, and she was the first third grader on finishing the National Reading Challenge, and that's all because of Mount Pleasant. Every single teacher of that school puts their heart and love to my kid, and I appreciate it. It's no just a school, it's our family. And now seeing it's not just our family, it could be seats more other school families, that's very concerning. And all I want to say is, I love where my kid is right now, and I wish my little one, that it's two years old now, can go to the same school and have the same love, because hearing what other schools are like, it's nowhere I want my kid to go. And honestly, I even look into going to private school, just for the same reason, because now she is in, she will go to fourth grade, and then she'll go to fifth grade in another school, and then go to sixth grade in another school. So my little girl, 10 years old, going to a whole nother stuff, emotional and we all know, will have to go to three different schools in three years, and we all know how much that can affect her own life. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ann Voss. Oh, you embarrassed her. We are incredibly proud of you, little lady.
Okay, Ann Voss, 3 Gettysburg Drive. I believe that smaller classes are more conducive to a better atmosphere for education, and because they were smaller, I was able to do screenings at Mount Pleasant. My job as school nurse, I paid attention to the health and welfare of the staff and the students. I found kids failing eye tests, kids not growing, and I notified parents about this. Mount Pleasant is a gem, it has a very caring staff, and it's multi-ethnic, where kids are accepted, no matter who they are, and they feel safe, and I think this feeling will go into their adulthood as well as being accepting of others. Talking about school closings, my son is a really good problem solver, and when he was going to the one Nashua High School, he could not get from... was going to the one Nashua High School, he could not get from his last class, from his second last classroom at that end of the school to that end of the school on time, going through the humongous amount of kids that were in the hallway, and one day he came home with a smile. And I said, what happened today? He said, I found a way to get there on time. I go down the stairs, out the front door, run around the building, come in the back door, and I'm on time.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, with talking about closing schools and talking about money, I think that when the system fails, righteous men and women rise up, and they have to feel safe in the city. If people are moving into all those apartment buildings and generating income to the city of Nashua, I'm really looking forward to my property taxes going down.
Robin Derry? Derry? Okay. Done? No? Okay. So she didn't come. Oh, sorry.
Good evening, everybody. Cam McGurk, 72 Charlotte Street. I've lived in five single-family homes and owned 12 units of rental property in the city of Nashua, so I certainly understand the taxpayer situation and how increases in any budget increase rents as well as increase home taxes. I have never, in the 55 years that I've been a homeowner in Nashua, ever had my taxes go down. So I don't expect that closing one or two schools will make my property taxes go down. That's a whole other discussion about how New Hampshire needs some other way to pay for things. But I actually came here tonight because I have a gift, and I've talked to Dr. Sarfati about our gift. I am a longtime trustee of Symphony New Hampshire, whose home base is here in Nashua. We've just celebrated 100 years here in the city. And about eight years ago, we had a fundraiser and created an alphabet book called Anis for Nashua, the artwork of which, somebody is recognizing, the artwork of which was created by Nashua schoolchildren and community members. We donated one to every school, elementary school library in the city. Well, when you're 100 years old, you have to do some closet cleaning, and we have found ourselves with 1,000 copies of Anis for Nashua, and we would like to donate them to every first grader and kindergarten student in the city of Nashua to take home as their gift. And if we have more left over, because I don't know exactly the numbers of how many kindergarten students and first graders we have, we will then pass them on to our preschool students at Franklin Street. So that's our gift to the Nashua School District. And I feel particularly thrilled to be able to do this, since I am completing in 20 days my 55th year in the district.
Wow.
So, I may need an extra minute to talk about the history of this school district. I have watched since 1968, our building of many schools, I've worked in 17 of those schools, I have been through more renovation projects than I can remember. In each year and each decision the district has made, I have watched them use a little bit of research and a lot of advice from noneducators. Consequently, in the 70s, we built three totally open concept schools, we all know what happened with those. We didn't ask teachers how they thought about it, we took advice of architects. And then in the 80s, we decided that all those first grade teachers who'd been teaching phonics and phonemic awareness, we needed to listen to publishers and change the way we teach reading. Well, we all know what's happened to that advice from publishers.
I swear it's on you.
I am. So then, I won't even get into science programs that we have purchased from publishers. So now I have listened to a statistician, and I understand what's happening. My first class in 1968 had 46 students in it. I had no Paris, there were no services, and I had one of everything in the classroom. Of course, the ideal now is the small classrooms we have. We cannot look at just statistics. I know that we have supplied you, the Mount Pleasant folks have supplied you with the research that says, Mount Pleasant is the ideal. When my, my adult sons went to Mount Pleasant, it was the setting of my very first experience as a speech-language pathologist. And my kids went to Mount Pleasant when there was no library, there was no elevator, it, it, you know, hadn't been redone the first time, and yes, the third floor was 190 degrees while the basement was cold. We have all lived through that. I love the fact that I'm back at Mount Pleasant this year, working while somebody's on leave. My point is, I appreciate how challenging the decisions are that you have in front of you, and the fact that you are considering what we taxpayers and renters and the expenses of this. But we have, right now, in all of my 55 years, I have never before seen the wonderful situation of smaller class sizes, regardless of what our teaching contract says, small classrooms with the ability for teachers to meet everybody's needs, because as we know, fair means everybody gets what they individually need, not everybody gets the same thing. So I hope that as you go forward, you will look at the research that says, closing a neighborhood school has such a negative influence upon the entire school community, and changing people from, you know, I look at some of the influence and see that my old neighborhood on Raymond Street, one part of it will go to one school, one, I mean, I think to myself, statisticians are not making decisions, teachers should be more involved in influencing how this decision is made. I appreciate how challenging your discussion is, and Dr. Sarfati and I will figure out how I get 1,000 books to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, thank you. Okay, this brings us up to our superintendent's comments. Dr. Andre, I will give you the floor.
Thank you. This week, I like to bring attention to several great happenings in our schools. First, I want to thank Mr. Smith for his presentation tonight on redistricting. I want to thank all the committee members who have worked and taken the time to attend the meetings in our community forums over the last few weeks. Please continue to take advantage of the feedback forms we have posted on the Nashua.edu website. We still have much work ahead of us, so please stay involved in the process. So the New Hampshire Ed Teacher of the Year nominees are announced. Congratulations to the eight teachers who were nominated to be the New Hampshire Department of Education 2024 Teacher of the Year. Our eight teachers are among 92 selected as the Teacher of the Year nominees. I'm delighted to join the New Hampshire Department of Education in honoring these eight educators. They are Master Sergeant Nicholas Ellis, junior ROTC teacher at Nashua North, Caitlin Lamado, grade four teacher at Mount Pleasant. Is she here?
No.
Take a bow. Courtney McDonald, kindergarten teacher at Bicentennial, Sean Malone, math teachers at Nashua North, Nicole Moody, grade three teacher at Fairgrounds Elementary, Mariana O'Connell, preschool teacher at New Searls, Maureen Pat, grade three teacher at Broad Street Elementary, and Robin Paranger, our teacher at Nashua South. I also would like to bring attention to leaning into literacy. The New Hampshire Department of Education has awarded the school district $300,000 for leaning into literacy resources for the upcoming school year. Each elementary school will receive $25,000 for resources that advance reading skills. The Leaning Into Literacy Initiative promotes teaching reading, teaching reading based on the science of how children learn to read. We welcome the added generous support. I also like to thank Dr. Sarfati for putting in those grant applications. Penachuk Middle School rededication, last Wednesday was a milestone day for Penachuk Middle School, along with several members of the Board of Education, Mayor Donches, Harriman Architects, and Harvey Construction officials turned over the ceremonial key to the school to Principal Falzirano. Signifying renovations are complete. Construction started in earnest two years ago and in the process has been on time and on budget. At a cost of $26 million, Penachuk Middle School now has two additional wings, a sunlit, filled library media center, upgraded special education in middle school, team area rooms, added safety and security, renovated classrooms and cafeteria, and a much improved parent drop-off, school bus drop-off, and ample pocket. Thank you to the staff and families at Penachuk Middle School for their flexibility and understanding during the construction. The school looks fantastic. So, again, thank you for all who contribute, continue to be part of the great middle school projects. Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to our board response to superintendent's comments. I always start off with the same people, so I'm actually going to start in the middle and say Ms. Brown.
No comment.
Okay. Ms. Oden.
I just want to thank everybody for coming, and going to some of the redistricting, I went to all three of them. I just want to say, no matter what school your children attend in Nashua, they will get a good education. I got the feeling at some of these that there were people that just thought their kids should not be moved to another school. Kids are resilient, they make new friends, but no matter what school they go to, they are going to get a good education because we have excellent, excellent teachers in Nashua.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
No comment.
Ms. Gilio.
I'd like to congratulate the eight teachers, and in particular Caitlin Lamado, with whom I had the pleasure of working at with when I was at Mount Pleasant for half a school year. I think it's wonderful news about the eight of them, and congratulations.
Thank you. Ms. Darling.
No comment.
Ms. Raymond.
Two things, I'd like to congratulate those eight teachers. Tonight has been really difficult with all of the data that we saw in trying to process that and, you know, thinking of the future, but while I'm doing that, I'm just, I'm blown away by once again how Nashua's teachers are overrepresented in our Teacher of the Year nominations for the state, so I just, I think that's great. And one of those teachers taught my kids, so that's pretty cool, too. And then the other thing I wanted to say was a thank you to Dr. Sarfati for the work on grants. Grants are not fun or easy to write or follow up on, but, you know, improving literacy and improving the skills of our youngest kids is, is really like the key foundation of how we get them to where they're going, so thank you for that.
Mr. Claffey? Ms. Lampier?
Well, I wanted to congratulate the teachers that are nominated for that great award, and also I'd like to thank our administrators, because I went to some of the, I went to some of the, the community meetings and stuff, and you guys were all there, and you put the time in, and you really worked hard to make sure that, that we got to listen to the community, so we really appreciate it. Thank you.
I have no comment, just congratulations to those eight teachers, and I will reiterate what Ms. Lampier said about participating with the community in regards to these changes and shifts in the district, so I'm sure, I'm sure it was well received and took up a lot of your guys' time, and I appreciate it very much. Okay, now on to student members. I'm going to guess it's Warren this time.
It is.
I've cracked their code.
Thank you.
It goes back to forth.
Yes, it does. Thank you and good evening, everyone. I know a main part of this meeting has been the redistricting. This is an extremely complex issue, and so when we make our decision, I think it is absolutely necessary to explore all possible solutions. I also think that it's very important to hear and understand the feedback given from the community. I am very glad that we are not making any binding decisions tonight, because I think it is necessary to take some extra time and really try and absorb and understand the plethora of data thrown at us. On a different note, school elections are this week, so I wish the best of luck to all candidates that are running. I know all the students are excited and a little bit nervous to see who will be leading and directing our classes in the up and coming school year. I think as a school, we are actually really lucky with the pool of candidates we have this year. No matter who wins and who loses, each class should be looking forward to an exciting and prosperous year. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. First, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Smith for all the work you put in to come up the results of this study. I also want to thank everyone in the school district's IT department for their work related to the cyber attack recently. Obviously, there's been a lot of progress made, now we can access Aspen and all that stuff, so a lot of good work from them. And then, obviously, we're getting towards the end of the school year, I just want to give a few reminders in regards to important dates. Next Monday, May 29th is Memorial Day, so there's no school. Senior prom is next Saturday, June 3rd, for South at least. And then senior finals happen the following week, June 5th and 6th, and underclassmen finals are June 16th and June 20th, remembering that we have no school on June 19th due to Juneteenth. And then graduation for South is happening on June 13th with a rain date of June 15th. On a different note as well, this Wednesday, May 24th, I'll be hosting my first eBloc meeting in room B1008. Students can come and ask any questions or share concerns related to the BOE that they have been trying to get this going, and I'm glad to finally be having our first meeting this Wednesday, so again, that's in B1008 during eBloc. Be sure to get signed in on MyFlex Learning if you'd like to attend. Another event tomorrow, I will be attending a tree planting event at South. It's going to be, we're thinking around nine trees will be planted, and this is part of a program aimed at increasing tree canopy at schools called the School Yard Canopy Enhancement Program, something through UNH, I believe, we applied to, and working with Mr. Richard, and we're able to get accepted into the program, so that should be good. And it's not costing us anything, I don't believe, it's just grant or something like And then, just a couple other events tomorrow, May 23rd at 6:30, there's an instrumental concert at South. Thursday will be the choral concert at South, and that's just some spring event for them, and donations from the music department will be accepted. Now on to athletics, there are obviously many events happening this week. The track team will be competing at the Division One Meet on Thursday at Salem High School at 4 o'clock. Looking forward to that, personally, competing there. And then tomorrow, May 23rd, the boys tennis team will be competing in the preliminary round at South at 4 o'clock versus Memorial. They've definitely had a very good season, South, that is, they're 10 and 4 at the moment, so just wanted to shout them out as well, but thank you.
Thank you. You guys are really going out on a limb for environmental conservation. Come on, I can't be the only one who thought of that. On a limb, trees. It was a rough pun. Anyway, we have no other committees this month except for Human Resources, so I will hand it over to Ms. Gilio.
Okay, so Human Resources met earlier this evening, and I am looking for a recommendation to suspend the rules to consider items from the HR meeting held earlier this evening.
So moved.
Right off second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, thank you, Ms. Raymond.
Oh, do I ask them to vote? Is that my role?
Well, no, I can. I don't know, I just lost my train of thought. So all those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Okay. Next, I'd like to see a recommendation to approve the personnel recommendations from tonight's meeting with the exclusion of number three on that list.
I'll second.
Okay, so Ms. Gilio made the motion, and Ms. Johnson seconded. All those in favor of approving the personnel recommendations as presented? Ms. Raymond?
Thank you, I'm sorry, I have a question, and it's for Dr. Andre, I think. So I know that the HR committee moved to, moved forward all but number three, are we coming back to number three with more information?
That's what I understood the intent was.
Okay, that was it, that was just the answer I was looking for. Thank you.
Yep, just, okay. So any other comments, questions? Okay. All those in favor of approving the personnel recommendations as presented for May 22nd, 2023? 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Ms. Brown says no. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. Again, it's been a long time since we've had a meeting go this long, huh, guys? I obviously wind down at 8 o'clock now. Okay, but we have to keep going because that's our job. Continue on, Ms. Gilio.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the recommendation of the administrative recommendations on May 22nd, 2023. Do I need to read the entire? I do for the record. I do.
I think you need to make, I don't know if you can make all four together, but I think you have to make, you have to read each one with the name and the amount.
Position.
Name, position, year, amount.
Okay, I can do that. So the first is a recommendation to elect Thomas Beer to the position of Assistant Director of Special Education for the 2023-2024 school year at a salary of $100,518. Second recommendation is to elect Sherri Fulton to the position of Title I Director for a .6 FTE for the 2023-24 school year at a salary of $62,977.20. The third was a recommendation to elect Jillian Cook to the position of Preschool Coordinator at Franklin Street School for the 2023-2024 school year at a salary of $70,000. And the fourth is a recommendation to elect Jacqueline Lesser to the position of Director of Adult Education for the 2023-2024 school year at a salary of $91,846.
So Ms. Gilio made that motion. Who seconded it?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Odin. So all those in favor of accepting the administrative recommendations as presented from March, May 22nd, 2023, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, welcome to the district. We're happy to have you all. Okay, this brings us up to liaison reports. We don't have any, right? No. And then, I think that no unfinished business, no new business, right? Second public comment, do we have anybody signed up? Right? And I just sit here.
Nobody told me that chair won.
Okay, so this, Alex Homala?
I didn't write an essay, don't worry, I just was taking notes, so I don't forget. Thank you for letting me speak.
Is the microphone on?
Yes, I just don't like these things.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do my best. So couple kind of questions and thoughts, and I'm just gonna spitball them at you guys. 2026, you mentioned for renovations for Mount Pleasant, that'll be 40 years since the last renovation. I know that because the last one was done when my husband was born, so I'll be having a birthday party for him. That's not your fault, and I recognize that, and I think a lot of people do, but I think what I would ask and plead of you all is that you do better. We can't fix what was done in the past from boards in the past, and we can sit here and say, why haven't they spent this money and deficits and all those good things, but like, let's do better. That's kind of my thoughts on that. I would love to know where this $25 million renovation figure comes from, because I keep hearing that, and I used to be in residential renovations. I realize it's not the same with commercial. Where is this number coming from? Because it just seems like a lot, so I don't know if that's like a public, if that's public knowledge, if it can be. I just sort of the, I guess the geek in me is like, what adds up to that? What are we talking about? And maybe if I saw it, I'd feel better about stomaching $25 million. That said, if I was told my tax dollars were gonna go up, I'd, if it was for schools, sure. And I say that now, my husband might be mad at me for saying that, but that's okay. So the other thing I want to mention also is this, the public forums were had. You all have read my emails, I believe, and I, I don't, I still don't understand why there was a forum at Mount Pleasant and it wasn't made public. It feels to me like it's not fair to all of you for it to have been made public legally so that you can attend, because it, in my perspective, I can't speak for anyone else, I guess, it was, it was hurtful that you guys weren't there. It feels then like maybe you don't care, and I don't think that that's true, especially hearing, you know, you guys even tonight. I, I know in my heart, like, you guys do care about these things, but you, I think if you look at it from my perspective, you could see how it would be seen that way, like, oh, they didn't even show up. That, you know, so I get the legality. Why can't we get to the point where there's a way to vote or something? I, again, I don't do this. I, I know there's laws for you all, but why can't we get to that point? And I, I know, Ms. Odin, that you mentioned that kids are resilient and they can move schools, and I hear that and I appreciate that, but I think also, I, me as a Mount Pleasant parent, I bought my house knowing that was my school, and I bought with the intent that that was my school. Some people may have looked at my house and said, oh, it's Mount Pleasant, I don't want to buy that. I didn't. I did the opposite. My realtor is a parent of Mount Pleasant and said, my five kids went here, I love this school, and I went, you do? That's great. It's gonna be diverse. My kid might learn Spanish at school? Awesome, because her first generation American godfather, who's originally, his family's from Mexico, would love her to speak Spanish. I usually talk Spanish.
Sorry.
It's okay. I will just close by saying, I want you guys also to just remember, today when I was walking to school to pick up my oldest, sorry, my two-year-old looked up at me and she said, save Mount Pleasant, as soon as we got to the school. And I'm not even joking, I have videos, I'll show you them on my phone, because it's really cute. And I just want you to know that I looked at her and I said, no, save your school. And she goes, okay, mama, save my school. That's all.
Thank you. I think just to address the $25 million, we talked about that last meeting, right, Ms. Raymond?
Yeah.
Where that information is gonna be, it's in the, not the master plan, that sounds evil.
So, we're just seeing if we can post it on the redistricting website.
Okay, just pull it from somewhere else? Okay, perfect. Because, yeah, I think that would be helpful. This brings us up to board member comments. We'll just do the same thing, Ms. Brown.
All right, thanks. I also want to congratulate all the teachers, and there are a few that were nominated for the Teacher of the Year, and a couple of my kids also were on that list, my kids' teachers, so it's pretty delightful. I also wanted to address one of the parents' concerns regarding the district meeting kids with special needs. They're very diligent about making accommodations for all students with special needs to have them both placed in locations that best serve them and also bring services to them to meet their individual needs. So I just want to say that we really prioritize making sure that students are, IEP needs are met. We actually just hired a new Assistant Director of Special Ed tonight, and I have a lot of faith that that department is just gonna continue to grow and improve the services. And thank you all for coming out. I know it's really not easy to get up here. It's not easy to be up here, it's not easy to get up at the microphone, and I appreciate the level of passion that everyone's brought out over the last several weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Odin.
I want to congratulate the eight teachers. Good for them, and I want to thank everybody for coming. I think it's important to have the, the chance to speak what you feel. I, I know the Mount Pleasant community is very close, and I appreciate everything that you've done, and I understand your feelings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I too want to congratulate the eight teachers. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I want to thank everybody who came to the three forums, although I missed one on Wednesday. I think it's important to hear what the community has to say. We're sitting here with a big task on what we're going to do. I think it's a shame, and we've heard people talk about the fact that, where's the money? Why didn't we renovate? We can't go back. Well, there's always a priority above a priority above a priority, and that's why I questioned tonight the New McCarthy Middle School. You know, what, what was the plan if this population was declining? Why didn't we have a study done back then before the school started? Because we could have put the same classrooms and done everything else in two middle schools and eliminated that, and taken that money and renovated schools that have to be done, like Mount Pleasant. Unfortunately, you know, the board doesn't get anything, you know, you hire people to do, and I know Mr. Claffey laughs at me when I say, I've been doing this for a while, but it hasn't been, it was because I was a concerned parent back in the 90s, and Ms. Odin can attest to that, that I came out and started, and, yep, you also, that I started coming out fighting for my kids. And this is what led me to one term back in 2000 on this board, a half a term, because I moved to the Board of Alden, became a state rep, and came back here again, because I fought for what I believed in. And I know we're up against a hard task here and what we're going to do, and it's gonna take a while for us, I guess, to shuffle through all this. But again, I want to thank everybody for all their opinions and their concerns, and we know that you love Mount Pleasant, and it's a shame that that school went by the wayside the way it did. Shame on this city. And again, I'm gonna say, what's the priority? I guess the Performing Arts Center was more of a priority than to take care of Mount Pleasant School. It's a shame. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that.
Ms. Gilio.
I've spoken more tonight than I usually do, so I think I've had my quota, so I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Darling.
Congrats to the eight, I think we've all said it now. And thank you to Ms. McGurk for the donation of books. My son is in kindergarten, so I can't wait to see it for myself. Art is very near and dear to my heart, it's how I make my second income, so I think it's great that we are able to promote kids as artists and show them where their, their work can go. To the Mount Pleasant community, I am so sorry. I am sorry that this board has not done the maintenance that it should have when it should have. I know that I was not there, I did not make those votes, and I'm not sure who in this horseshoe was, but I do think that that's the one thing you guys probably haven't heard and that you deserve to have heard months ago. I am sorry. Have a good night, y'all.
Ms. Raymond.
Well, I can't follow that up. I'm just gonna mention, so that everybody remembers, it's Memorial Day Parade in two weeks, so as always, all of our marching bands from the middle and high schools will be in the Memorial Day Parade. Oh, it's this Monday?
Mm-hmm.
It's one week, it's in one week. Our meeting is in two weeks. Anyways, come to the Memorial Day Parade, it's always lovely. I went by Elm Street the other day, and they were marching around the building, and it was the cutest thing, so.
Mr. Claffey.
Thank you. I would like to wish all the nominees best wishes on Teacher of the Year. I have to say, Ms. Paranger, if I had to pick one, she, I don't know if you're aware of the years and years that she would raise thousands of dollars each year asking local restaurants to donate soup for the Nashua Soup Kitchen, beyond being a fantastic teacher. When I made the mistake of thinking about running for this position, I was still employed, and she was the first person that I sought out for advice, because I think she started in '84, '85. Sorry, Robin, no one's doing math. So best wishes to all, but if it has to be a national person, Robin is so deserved.
Thank you. Ms. Lampier.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Johnson, because for many years, I was not able to come out and advocate for my kids, and, you know, I was busy working and taking care of them, and I, I never really thought of what was going on in the community, and it's people like you who come out and fight for everybody that really make a difference, so thank you.
Well, I don't think I have anything to say. Well, now that I'm being instigated, let me start by telling you about how my morning went. No, I'm just kidding. Yeah, this was, this was a good meeting. I was, I was anticipating the level of conversation and questions and discussion that we had, and I am just, I'm really grateful that we're, as a board, able to sit at this horseshoe and engage in these conversations, given, I mean, when, when I first started on this board and we, we went into COVID, it was, it was pretty hairy at times. I'm incredibly proud of us for the growth that we've done and our ability to have these conversations now. But with that said, I am looking for a...
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Thank you. Okay, although that was Ms. Johnson, Ms. Gilio, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are out of, we are closed at 8:49 PM.